All right, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Great, so we're going to start tonight's South Burlington City Council meeting for January 13th, 2025, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will ask Elizabeth Fitzgerald to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item two, which is instructions on exiting the building in case of emergency and review of technology options. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. So for those in the room, if there's an emergency, you can go out the rear of the auditorium on the left or right, and then turn left or right to get outside. For those participating remotely, thank you for joining us as well. If you'd like to make a comment during any item on our agenda, you can turn your camera on and the chair will call on you, or you can indicate that you'd like to speak in the chat, and I will have the chair call on you. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Thank you, Jesse. Item three, which is agenda review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the agenda tonight?
Yes, I have a late agenda request. This is in your inbox as well. So we have a... The request is that you remove one page of your disbursements, which has one check on it for the Larkin Family Partnership, from your consent agenda, and then between items 14 and 15, you add a late agenda... Actually, two late agenda items. One, that is to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing and securing real estate purchase or lease, and specifically right-of-way related to the bike-ped bridge, and then come out of executive session and possibly grant the city treasurer permission to cut said check that you have removed from your disbursements.
So is that one page in item A in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to remove one page from the consent agenda, item A, and then we're going to add an agenda, item 14A, which would be an executive session, and when we come out of the executive session, we're going to then have a vote on that particular item.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is everybody okay with that? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now at item four, which is comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda. Are there any comments from anybody in the public or online? All right. Seeing as how they're latecomer. Comment from the public?
This is Batina.
No? Okay. Moving on to item five, which is councilors' announcements and reports on committee assignments, and the city manager's report. Who would like to start tonight? Mike, let's go around this one.
On January 7th... Thank you, thank you. I always forget. On January 7th, as the South Burlington GMT Commissioner, I attended the retreat where the board did decide to continue exploring separating the urban from the rural with TBT and RCT as the potential past two partners for the rural routes. All three parties have agreed to continue to do the due diligence, and then to hopefully reach a point where we can make a decision, confident that it works for everyone, the passengers, the companies, and the financial challenges that we need to meet. One bit of good news in the sense that the current variance of the major cuts and reimagining of the routes, which would include 1 and 11, will have... Excuse me, will have 1 and 11 run by Dorset, U-Mall City Center, ensuring connections between South Burlington and Burlington every 15 minutes. So that will be an improvement for those of us who live in the cities... Those who live in the city center, but also those who wish to come and enjoy the amenities that South Burlington has to offer. On the airport commission, I attended that on the 8th as the backup, just to follow what's going on. I was asked by the city head of the airport to give a shout-out to our chair for thanking him to every city council advertising BTV front to center on his computer. He noticed that, just so you noticed. So he wanted me to pass that on. Yes. In terms of just updates that came out of that meeting, on the noise installation, 64 houses in South Burlington are in the pipeline to be completed by October 2025. Unfortunately, there's some bad news in this area. As you recall, you may recall, there was 18.75 million made available as one-time money by DOD to help with noise mitigation. Unfortunately, South Burlington's grants did not get any of its grants money adopted, or requests for grant money. There is still 8.75 million left in the kitty, and BTV will reapply in the spring, and of course, the Vermont congressional delegation was briefed on the status. The next terminal project, which includes geothermal heating as it meets our climate change actions requirements, the vertical construction will start this spring, so people will start seeing it from the road. In terms of services, Frontier Airlines addition of twice a week to Tampa and Orlando has not dampened the ridership of other Florida flights. So apparently, we are all very keen to go to Florida, or a lot of us seem to be. September and October were the highest passenger numbers served in BTV history, but 2008 remains the highest year on record. BTB, the airport, also Smootie's credit rating was boosted to a BAA1, the highest in 15 years, and also the airport was happy to share with us, the head of the airport, that BTV has been accepted into the Airport Carbon Accreditation Program. It's only the 17th airport to be accepted into this program in the US, and only the second in New England. Also, they will be announcing or exploring the possibility of doing something called an Aeropass, which will allow residents here to escort families and family members and guests to their flights, which also increases their access to amenities, which hopefully means more lock taxes for us. And the final thing is, as I just would mention, is I think I forewarned last time that there was going to be an ordinance change in Burlington, which would allow the airport officials to ticket cars if left by the curbside. That was adopted. So it's no longer... It is... So keep that in mind when you go to the airport. If you vacate your car and leave it on the roadside, it will be ticketed. However, to address that, they continue to explore the... To make it easier for people, they're still exploring the possibility of creating free short-term parking. The last thing I did since the last meeting was, the same day, I then attended the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. They will be working with the city to help identify key crosswalks for durable paint use, to be sure that durable paint apparently lasts about three years. They'll also participate in the February rollout discussion of the Active Transportation Plan, and they will also start within the committee and then reach out to the public to start discussing options that the community can have to ensure effective shared path use between e-bikes, bikes, and pedestrians, looking at other communities on how they've handled that challenge. And finally, they announced that they'll be organizing with the Parks and Recs Committee and not Reed Events for Bikes in May in the Chamberlain Neighborhood. So that's it. Thanks.
Lori?
So I attended both a Natural Resource Council meeting and just this evening, a Parks and Rec meeting, and at those meetings, CRO was doing the kickoff for the Open Space and Parks and Rec Master Plan process. Very exciting meetings and great presentation, and I think it's going to be a dynamic process that's really going to engage all our city in how we vision the future for our parks and open space. They are looking to have an advisory group and would like a member of the council to be part of that advisory group. Being on both committees, I would be thrilled to do it, but if someone else feels a driving desire, I don't have to capitalize on it, but they do want a council member part of that advisory group, which will be meeting once a month throughout the year to help guide this process forward and make sure that it gets to as many areas of our city for input as possible. And the timeline is to have that process finished by the end of the year, January of 2026, actually. And Elizabeth and I did a conversation with the counselor this weekend, and one member of the public came and recommended a book called Killed by a Traffic Engineer, which he was... Had just finished reading and encourages people to read because it talks about how road engineers... Road engineering is often responsible for the difficulties and problems we have with pedestrian safety around transportation. And one point was brought up, which I don't know the answer to, and I wanted to bring to council and staff, which is that on the social media platforms, whether it's Front Porch Forum or the Facebook groups, often there are postings about things that people see as deficiency in the city, or something that needs to be addressed, and then they sort of morph into conversations that don't have answers, and the question was asked whether anyone on staff is monitoring the public forums so that many of these questions could be answered very quickly with a... Maybe a one-sentence response to put the conversation to rest and give people a place to go, get the concerns addressed. But I don't know if we have anybody that looks at those, but that was a suggestion that could make sense. Just one more thing for staff to do. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Elizabeth?
Yeah, in addition to a couple of the topics that Lori mentioned at conversation with the counselor, the lighting on Dorset was discussed a little bit, and in line with sidewalks and paths. There also was discussion on how the consultant for work that's kind of not specifically planned yet, but on a growth management plan, and some feedback around that the data that would be generated would be consistent with what is asked for, and some concern that it would need to be inclusive and eliminate bias. So a lot of... I won't say a lot, but some feedback on the selection process of a consultant that might work with council and staff on a growth management plan. There also was the conversation around situational awareness regarding traffic and pet safety, too, and ironically, just driving in tonight, and you know how we have the flashing pedestrian crosswalks, a lot of people press the button and just start walking, and I don't think that was ever the intent from a safety standpoint, but there may be some opportunities to kind of remind folks that it's a mutual responsibility, too. I did sit in on the school board meeting, which the budget was adopted 3 to 2, and right now, what's proposed is an 8.1% tax rate increase. That can go up or down based on the state variables of yield and the statewide adjustment that really won't be known till after town meeting day, but we'll hear more about that from the school district. I think of note, though, there will be six positions that will be up for election or reelection in March. There will be three of the current... Actually, four of the current members are up for election or reelection based on when they came on board, and one of them is not going to run again. Chris Trombley is not going to run. So, and the others, there will be two three-year seats, two two-year seats, and two one-year seats. So I know, I'm sure the school will be active, looking for candidates, and I would encourage our audience, online and in person, and the rest of my council colleagues to sort of tap into those folks who maybe have expressed an interest in community service. I think... Lori, did you mention meeting with Emily? Okay. Lori and I, based on Lori bringing up kind of the emergency shelter, particularly in really cold temperatures, frigid temperatures, we did get a meeting set up with Emily Crassnow to sort of see what was going on in Montpelier. So she is providing us with some additional information, and you may have more to add after, but we did get a contact in the Burlington area of sort of what... How Burlington has handled that, and what they've done, and what some of the challenges are. So Lori and I are trying to get informed and educated at this point, but I know we're expecting some pretty cold weather this week, too. So did you want to add anything, Lori?
Just that it's a really complicated issue, and there aren't easy answers, and that the states... I think it's the states funding for emergency cold weather is... Kicks in at 20 below zero. So there's a big gap between what's comfortable and livable and what can get funding. So it's a long-term conversation.
I also... We did... The council got a letter or email from a community member regarding salting of pathways and pets, and I happened to be turning on a road earlier this week and saw a biker down and kind of on the ground, so I stopped to see if they were okay, and they were taking a picture of a small mound of salt on the walkway, and it really looked like... I know the Department of Public Works works really hard on minimizing the amount of salt that gets spread, but they had a concern. It probably has been communicated to city staff, but there were a couple of folks that that was of interest to, and I'm sure that was just a feeder issue, but wanted to pass that on. And then lastly, I am going to officially announce that I am going to run again for a two-year seat, so hopefully I can secure a few signatures this evening, and I would really look forward to continuing a work in service of the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Andrew?
So no official meetings for me this week. Was interviewed by a journalist at Run on Climate, who is intending to write a piece on all things climate focusing on South Burlington, so look forward to that coming out.
Thank you. I just have a few things here. So I was invited by the Berry Rotary to go down and visit and give a speech about my Peace Corps experience back in 87 through 89, and if you remember Wednesday, it was kind of snowy, so it was a white-knuckle ride down on the interstate and River Road, but I got there, and it was a great experience. Great to see them, meet 12 people, and received a rotary coin, which was interesting, and we all learned some history about West Africa, which is cool. I then, the same night, attended the Wills and Trust presentation sponsored by the Rec Department by LMC Law. Very informative. I learned some things. They started off with 10 questions. She had 10 questions, and some were true or false, and some were, "How much do you think?", and a lot of people were like, "Oh, I didn't know that about Vermont", you know, a state law, and probate court and things like that. So I asked everybody, "If you haven't thought about your future estate, you might want to be thinking about it, and what your plans are, because you have to make a plan." I went to the PAC meeting today, the Pension Advisory Committee, and there's an agenda item later on to hear from Dan Capell from SEI personally. And then I did email all the city councilors to ask for your book recommendations, so that the library can put a special... You know, city councilors recommend these books, and I chose three, and I'm waiting to hear back. So we want to have this by late January for February, right? Well, okay. And then I just have a couple of personal statements. So my dad passed away in 2018, and he lived on Michael Lane in Pacific Palisades, and he lived in a condo there from 1978 until 2018, when he passed. My heart goes out to everybody in Los Angeles County right now, dealing with the fact that we've lost 12,000 homes, and these people have nowhere to go. It's just a repeat of what's going on here, other parts of the country, and around the world, right? I can't stress that enough. It's people who had homes that are destroyed, and now they've lost everything, and they have nowhere to go. And I think this problem speaks volumes about the inability of some communities to deal with really large effects from climate change, like extreme fire at 100 mile an hour winds. I don't think anybody could really effectively deal with that through a fire department. I just... I don't think it's possible. We're going to have to make changes. They're going to have to make changes in the future. If those people want to live in those locations again, they're going to have to build differently. And personally, I don't know if that condo is still there. We have some friends that are neighbors there. We're trying to find out whether their homes... We think their homes might not have been touched. Here's the other personal item. My mother, Maxine Barrett, lived in Venice, Florida, until she passed in 2009. One of the last things she did was work on petitions to make sure that a defunct wastewater park in Venice, Florida was turned into a beautiful walking park with a dog park and a pond and a pavilion. And so because of her hard work back in 2010 or 11, the park did get renovated, turned into a beautiful park. It's called the Virginia Maxine Barrett Park, and recently, it came to my attention that some people in Venice have been trying to change the name. So it's funny how these things kind of like... So I've been in touch with the Venice City Hall, trying to figure out why they're doing this, and there's a meeting tomorrow that I'm attending, and I've written a letter on behalf of myself and my siblings to state why we believe that the park should remain in the same name that it is today. So it's just very interesting how these... Wherever you go, you have the same issues, right? And so I just... It's a thing that I've been dealing with for the last two weeks now, and we are hopefully making progress, and hopefully by tomorrow, we'll hear that the Citizens Advisory Board in Venice is going to leave alone. Because even though you're rich and have spent $10 million helping your community, doesn't give you the right to put your name on a park that somebody who didn't contribute $10 million, but contributed a lot of their own personal time, who thought... Who fought very hard for a common cause for the general public to have a beautiful park. There's no reason why that should be taken away from them. So, okay, I'm off my soapbox. Thank you very much. And that's all I have to report tonight. Jesse?
Thank you. So a few personnel things to share with the council tonight. First, I want to recognize Deputy Fire Chief Chris Corbin, who is here in the audience with us. Last week, or 10 days ago, he received his Chief Fire Officer designation from the Center for Public Safety Excellence. He is one of four fire professionals in the state who have this designation. We have another one in the room as well. So 50% in South Burlington. Well done, Chris. Last week, we also had three new firefighters and EMTs join our team, as well as a new police officer, and today, we had Batina Miguez, our new Climate Action Manager, join our team as well. So you will officially meet her and hear from her at your February 3 meeting. She will also be reaching out to you, but she knows you are all very excited to have her here on our team. Two other just kind of small housekeeping items. We are... Some of us are meeting with Longview Project landowner on Friday, so hopefully we will have something to recommend at your... At a future meeting. And then just a reminder, we do not have another regular council meeting until February 3, but you do have a steering committee meeting, joint meeting with the school board on January 22 at 4 o'clock. That will be at the school administrative offices, not here. It's right before their regular meeting. So we will primarily be discussing budgets, but I also understand that they'd like to discuss the timeline for the school budget voting and all resident voting. So you will see that agenda this week. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda, item six, and we have four items. Item A, which is consider and sign disbursements. Remember that we changed the agenda to remove one page from the disbursements. Item B, which is receive the FY25 Policy Priorities and Strategies Report, number one, and C, approve the Unified Planning Work Program Submittals for 2025 to include ADA Transition Plan for Transportation System, Plan for Implementation of Our Sidewalk Path Improvements, Mary Street-Wilston Road Scoping, Plan for Getting EV Charging Into Existing Multi-Unit Housing, and Active Transportation Plan Part II, an Official Map, Parallel Routes, Signage Marking, and Package for Local Streets. Item D is authorize the city manager to execute a utility agreement with Green Mountain Power, Comcast, and Consolidated for the Pedestrian and Bicycle Bridge over Interstate 89 at Exit 13. That's parcel number eight. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item seven, which is a public hearing that's worn for seven. It's five of... Is there a short thing that we can do? Item 10? Item 10 is five minutes. The...
No, you can't approve the warrant until you approve the budget. You could do a very fast executive session.
You want to do that? Okay. So do we have a motion to read for that?
I think it's... So it's just to move to go into that, the top one?
Just the top one?
Yep, just this one.
Oh, the consider. Okay. Consider... I make a move that we consider entering into executive session pursuant to 1 VSA 313A1, A and 2, for the purpose of discussing securing of real estate purchases or lease options, specifically 189 bicycle pedestrian bridge right-of-way acquisitions. Do I have to say?
Me, Steve, Alana, Colin, and Jared.
Jesse, Steve, Alana, Colin, and Jared.
Is it just one motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right, so we're going to go down the hall real quick? Okay, we are back, and it's after 7 o'clock, so we're going to start item seven, which is public hearing, worn for 7:00 PM. Hold a public hearing on the proposed FY26 budget and capital improvement plan. Jesse Baker, City Manager. Oh, do we need a vote to open the public hearing? A motion?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you.
So to start off, before we hear feedback from the community, I thought it would be helpful to go through a quick overview of where we are, if that's acceptable to the council, and I'll ask Martha Machar to come down and sit at the table with me as well. So I... As you have heard me say before, I have the privilege of presenting this budget, but I do want to acknowledge that this was a budget that was created by our entire leadership team, many of whom are here with us tonight, so I want to take a quick second to recognize them. So we have Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief Stephen Locke, Finance Director Martha Machar, City Attorney Colin McNeil, Planning Director Paul Connor, Deputy Fire Chief Chris Corbin, Police Chief Sean Burke, Deputy City Attorney Jared Pellerin, Batina Miguez, who's now part of our leadership team, but is not accountable for this budget, our Climate Action Manager, Maddie Sousa, who's our HR Generalist, and is doing a very excellent job filling in during our HR Director vacancy, Andy Brumbah, our Communications Coordinator Manager, Jennifer Murray, our Library Director, Alana Blanchard, our Community Development Director, Anna Dubrowski, our Data Manager, Nick Jengrow, our IAT Director, Holly Reese, our City Clerk, and then online, I believe, we have Tom DePietro, our Public Works Director, and Erica Collin, our Deputy Director for Public Works for Capital Projects. So all of them spent a huge amount of time helping to build this budget as well. So with the budget, we always like to start with a staff team with who we are and who we serve. So you all know this very well, but for the community, we have 21,000 neighbors. About 16% of those are over the age of 65. A factor we look at a lot is that 14% of our neighbors speak a language other than English at home, which has an impact on how we provide the best services to them, and we try and be very conscientious of that. We're also a community in transition. As you all know, we're, at this point, only... Or less than 50% of our neighbors live in single-family homes, and we are transitioning into neighbors living in multifamily homes. This presentation is also in your packet, if you want to go back to any of these data points. And then we think about who we are as a team and what we're asking our neighbors to pay for as we provide services. So we have approximately 195 employees across 14 departments. We have 131 volunteers who volunteer every month on a board or committee with the city, and of course, all of our city buildings, parks, and natural areas. So this is your sixth conversations. I believe this is your... 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yes, this is your sixth conversation on this budget, and what is included in these slides is where I believe you are, which is slightly different from the city manager's proposed budget I presented on December 2. So what this budget achieves is continuing our current level of service delivery. So everything we are doing this year, we will continue to do next year. You asked us to maximize our non-property tax revenue by aggressively looking at local options tax and non-property tax revenue structures, fees, fines, et cetera. We tried to be sensitive to the property tax impacts from the state education fund and limit the municipal property tax impact. It addresses state funding challenges that we... Where we saw either deduction or a shift in funding for some really critical public safety tools, specifically our investing additional funds in our community outreach team and our community justice center. It does include funding to open the library on Sundays. It supports vibrancy in city center by funding the South Burlington City Center collaboration. It supports vibrancy in city center by funding the South Burlington City Center Collaborative. And it increases funding for line striping and sidewalk improvements and for Green Mountain Transit to meet our climate and transit goals. So with all of those things, we stand at a general fund budget, the most significant portion of our budget that is funded by property taxes, of three point three-three percent increase in the property, in the estimated property tax rate. So that's just over a penny and a half. You can see all that, how that is broken down here. It's about a two point five percent increase in the overall general fund budget and results in the average condo owner paying forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine additional cents in next year. It's an annual, that's an annual number, or the average homeowner paying an additional seventy-three dollars and forty-seven cents. Also to note that the, both the pennies for open space and paths are increasing three point one-four percent, or thirteen thousand new dollars each. So just to make clear what assumptions we are making for the community. So again, we're maintaining all existing programs and services. We're assuming a grand list growth of one point five percent and a twenty percent growth in the TIF grand list. This includes all contractual COLA and STEP increases. As you know, our workers' comp insurance went up twenty-three percent, and our property and liability insurance went up twenty-one percent. It also includes an increase of, in health insurance costs of four percent, but that is significantly down, given what Martha and Steve were able to accomplish by renegotiating our stop-loss coverage. And then it does include the allocation to the South Burlington Pension Fund in full that you will hear presented later in this agenda. So just as a reminder of the overall budget, so the general fund budget is sixty-five percent of our total city budget. Total city budget sitting at fifty-five point eight million. Other big portions of that are stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water. So if you look at that broken down across service area in the city, the biggest percentage of that is in public works. Obviously, most of that, the significant portion of that is general fund, but a lot of that is our utility funds as well. So you have seventy-five percent of the budget between public works, police and fire, public safety, and then a quarter spent on all of the backbone organizations, library, parks, and rec, planning and zoning, and community development, and the City Clerk's Office, and finance, and IT, and communications, and all of the amazing staff. I do want to note that we are continuing to incrementally increase our contribution to capital, the capital improvement plan budget. So these are the, the capital dollars, the things, the equipment that we use to maintain our infrastructure. We believe it's important to continually incrementally increase that to keep up with our preventive maintenance, to make sure our infrastructure is not further eroded. So of that four point four-six million, going to the general fund CIP this year, one point one million of that is projects that include some aspect of climate work. And this budget does include a proposed use of two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of one-time money to supplement that climate work. On the utilities fund side, you received a great presentation from Public Works about this. We are seeing increases of three percent and eight percent across our utilities, stormwater, sewer, and water. These are primarily driven by needed capital projects, both the Water Tower project that's currently out to bid, and our Bartlett Bay wastewater treatment plant facility project that's at sixty percent design at the moment. And we are also adding, this is where we are adding to staff this year, one to support the Bartlett Bay wastewater treatment plant, which currently operates with one FTE on duty at any time, and then one staff to support our pump station, pump station maintenance. As you may recall, we have over forty pump stations citywide. So while this is a very good budget, and we are, we as staff are prepared to implement this budget and continue our current levels of service, this community does have big ambitions for city government, so I want to call out a few things that are not included in this budget. So that's the rec center, any further explanation of creating a rec center, a city green, expanding staff to support such things like field maintenance and infrastructure maintenance, funding of many plans that are underway, potentially additional staffing in the clerk's office to support increased city center traffic, parking fund initiation that would ultimately become an enterprise fund, current and future recommendations from the Safe Routes to School, enforcement staff for various ordinances, community development staffing or migrant grants or revolving loan programs, or any new funds to support our cemeteries. It is, this is a level service budget. This is a budget that maintains what we're doing this year to be respectful of the property taxpayers, given other property tax pressures statewide. So your next steps is tonight, you are currently holding your public hearing. You then will take action to send, have further discussion on this budget and take action to send a budget to the voters. January twenty-second, you will hold your steering committee meeting with the school board. March third is our annual town meeting day presentation at six-thirty here at City Hall. And then, of course, March fourth is town meeting day. And more information on voting and this budget can be found at the website. So that is the overview I want to share. Happy to answer questions.
Counsel, have comments or questions?
I just want to express gratitude to staff and the entire leadership team for the diligence and hard work that went into creating a budget that has, that meets our goals and really tries to contain costs.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you. And there are things included in this budget that even though you had a list of things it didn't include, we do have a data person now, we have a climate action person. So there are some additions that are important, and we look forward to having, so. Time for comments from the public? Any comment from the public on the budget, either online or in the audience? Raise your hand. Turn on your camera. Come on, people. Three point three-three percent, I guess that. Oh, Mr. Coleman would like to make a comment. Do you want to come up to the podium, please, and identify yourself?
I'll just point out the obvious.
Can you identify yourself first?
Oh, yeah, Wendell Coleman, sixty-nine Joy Drive, F seven. And you are competing with the same tag space that the school system is. Just remember that that could have an impact. That's all I got to say.
We are well aware. Thank you very much. That's why this number is, is a good competitive number. And then we'll wait and see what the actual school number is, right? Any other comments? Counsel, have any other comments?
I would just like to echo both your and Laura's comments that this is a really amazing job by the city staff to bring us down to this three point three rate, given that we started at seven percent. And, you know, this is not the only year they've done this. They did this last year as well. So I think we also just need to be mindful of the discussions we have to have going forward and how we basically address what will probably be an annual challenge, given the staff we have, given the ordinances we have, given the opportunities we have in South Burlington, I'm sure we can. And, and I look forward to next year as a team with same counselors or new counselors, we'll see what the elections do. But with the, the great staff that we have here, and it continues to be here on this council, I'm sure we can meet that challenge next year as well.
Thank you, Mike. Well, if there's no other comment, then I think, oh.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. So the hearing is closed. That's the end of item seven. We're gonna vote on item nine, right?
So you have a whole series of votes?
Yes.
If, I mean, you can have further discussion on your opinions on the budget if you want. Or if you are satisfied with the budget as presented, you have a whole series of votes to walk through here. Do you, do you want me to talk through them, or?
Well, item eight is the resolution to use ARPA-inspired funds, so do you want to just jump to item nine right away, or?
So, no, the, we have ordered these in a way that we think makes logical sense, so first you have to approve these of long-term funds in order to approve the budget.
So item eight is approved resolution number twenty twenty-five dash one to use ARPA-inspired fund balance to support climate capital improvement plan projects in FY twenty-six.
So moved?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Now we're at item nine, which is consider the proposed FY twenty-six general fund, capital improvement plan, and enterprise fund budgets. Approved resolution twenty twenty-five dash two approving the FY twenty-six to FY thirty-five capital improvement plan. And then also possibly approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash three, which approves the FY twenty-six city budget and enterprise funds and sending all to the steering committee and the voters of the town meeting day on March fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash two.
Second.
And three.
Second?
Do you?
Uh-oh. Should we do them both together, you mean?
We can.
Either, sorry, either way.
You want to do them all together? You want to change your motion?
I'll amend my motion to also approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash three.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second to approve those two resolutions. Do we have a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. And now we have item ten, which is approve the twenty twenty-five town meeting day warning and set the public information public hearing for March third, the night before town meeting day, twenty twenty-five at six-thirty PM.
Move to approve the two thousand twenty-five town meeting day warning and set the public information public hearing for March third, two thousand twenty-five at six-thirty PM.
Second that?
We have a motion and a second to set the town meeting day warning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This is just, we're just cruising here. So now we're here to possibly approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash four, which sets the water, wastewater, and stormwater rates and allocation fees for FY twenty-six. Before you move, you can go ahead and move if you'd like to, but I, I do want to have a slight discussion on that, so.
So I move to approve resolution two thousand twenty-five dash four, setting the water, wastewater, and stormwater rate and allocation fees for fiscal year twenty-six.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Yes, there is, Tim. So in the resolutions, I didn't see in the resolutions for water and wastewater, or at least in wastewater, did I? Any reference to the, or, or, either water or wastewater, reference to the Water Tower or the, or the bond, you know, for, for Bartlett Bay? Did I miss something there?
So the debt service for those two projects is built into the enterprise fund budgets. Is that what you're?
Well, there, there are resolutions for, for those, those rates, those water and wastewater rates. And it says whereas, whereas, but none of those whereas is referred to, you know, the, 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 the construction of the Bartlett Bay changes and the, the new water tank. So should they have been in there, or? Or is that in another?
So, sorry, go ahead, brother.
I mean, because, because the rate's increasing, is part of the rate increasing because of the impending reconstruction of Bartlett Bay and because of the water tank?
Partly, yes, and the funding for those projects was approved last year as part of FY twenty-five budget. And that's why it's not referenced in the resolutions. The resolution is just for you to approve the rates to be charged to the resident.
Okay. It does reference upgrade of our water system in the third where, fourth where else clause.
Just upgrade, okay.
Upgrade.
All right. Okay, I'm, I'm fine. I just wanted to ask that question, so. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that passes unanimously as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That is the biggest set of policy votes that you will take this year, because it enables us to do everything else that we do, so thank you very much. Let us know how we can help with the education of the voters as well. And team, thank you very much for being here. Some of you can leave, not all of you.
And I just, I just want to say that I think the speed with which we went through that and the fact that there was no public comment on this budget, maybe I'm being optimistic here, but I think it really reflects on the quality of the work that was done, making it easy for us to run through it like that. So again, thank you.
So now we'll move on to item twelve, which is receive a briefing on the city's response to Act one eighty. That's the pre-charge Community Justice Center services and advocacy around regionalization. We'll be hearing from Jesse Baker, city manager, and Sean Burke, the Chief of Police. Good evening, Chief.
How's everybody?
Good. We didn't know that this would go this fast, and so I think we're just gonna have to pick some item and stretch it out for a couple hours, so let's do it now.
So, along those lines, can we make sure that the retirement folks are on the way back? Okay, thanks.
Good to go. All right, just for the record, my name is Sean Burke. I have the privilege of serving as your police chief, and we're gonna talk about our Community Justice Center tonight. So probably what's most helpful is a brief overview of the scope of the work that's done within the center. So essentially, we have two employees that facilitate restorative justice to resolve pre-charge criminal cases. They also offer mediation services, and they, the last leg of their work includes parallel justice. I'm sorry, not parallel, yeah, parallel justice, I'm sorry. And that's for crime victims to, in order to have voice about how they were impacted by a crime that's occurred in the community, and also offers some degree of resources in terms of insurance deductible or buying a bicycle. And that work is facilitated through a crime center victim state grant. The pre-charge work that the center was doing was historically funded by a Department of Corrections grant, which is no longer being funded by Department of Corrections this year because of the legislation that was passed last session. So essentially, what policymakers have directed is that Department of Corrections is no longer responsible for pre-charge work, and they've shifted that responsibility to the Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General's Office received this mandate without any appropriations from the legislature, but also with a second directive in the work, and that is to look for areas in which to establish geographic equity around the state and streamline services. Chittingen County is a little unique in the sense of our size, a hundred and sixty thousand essentially in population. Our county has four community justice centers. Most counties in the state have a singular entity. A focus of the Attorney General's work has been to examine how many centers should exist in any one jurisdiction. And that's where we've hit a little bit of a stumbling block here in Chittingen County in terms of trying to establish a strategy in order to keep all of our centers functioning in a way that best serves our communities. Each center here in Chittingen County, they do essentially the same work, but there's some one-offs. So here in South Burlington, we do less work with Department of Corrections clientele that are released back into the community through circles of accountability, and we don't do any work within the facility itself. Other centers like Essex and Burlington are engaged in that work, and therefore, they're still eligible for some granting through the Department of Corrections. That's kind of the challenge that we've been faced with. So the manager, along with her colleagues, convened a group of stakeholders, being the Community Justice Center Directors and police chiefs, managers, to talk about what we're facing. And we came up with a strategy, which was shared with you in the letter that the manager and the remaining stakeholders prepared essentially and signed off on. You want, you gonna take the next piece?
I think you just covered it. Great. I would just add the, so the nuance here is that there are four current sites in Chittingen County, Burlington, South Burlington, Williston, and Essex, as the chief just described. So as we, as a four-community group with some additional communities, because we, all three communities, all, all four communities, in theory, provide service to other regional communities as well. So as we thought about that and talked through what our shared values were for keeping restore, pre-charge practices, restorative practices, close to our neighbors, the manager-led communities have a strong value of ensuring that that work stays very closely embedded with police departments. And so you will see in the letter that the letter comes from three of those four communities and asks that at a minimum, the AGO's office, as they're looking at how this is implemented over time, think about implementing two sites in Chittingen County, one in a manager-led community that can keep that really close connection between restorative staff and our police departments, and potentially one in Burlington, where there's a very different organizational structure. So that's the request we have put. Um, so that's the request we have put forward. I don't know if there's specifics about that you want to add, chief?
I guess just to highlight the value of the, the model here in South Burlington. So having previously served in Burlington where the Community Justice Center is under a different umbrella of city government and, uh, physically removed from police headquarters, when I joined the South Burlington Police, I was immediately struck with the synergy between the C J C and our staff. Uh, that has evolved. We have a new executive director who happens to be a native of South Burlington. He's very passionate for this work, and it's really heartening to see officers connecting with someone like our executive director, Joseph Levonway, and really thinking through how people that either have, uh, been the responsible parties or negatively affected by crime, how the, the best remedy can be brought to bear. And, uh, the C J C often comes to their mind, and that's not always the case in police culture. Oftentimes, police culture, the police officers are seeking some form of, of justice that is, you know, only imposed by a district court, and that's simply not probably the most effective when you think about some of the low-level misdemeanor conduct and first-time offenders because of the recidivism rate, meaning the recidivism late, rate appears to be lower with folks that are referred immediately or within, you know, their, the infancy of their criminality, if you will, to, uh, a program like a restorative justice to, you know, resolve that, um, that crime, but also understand truly the negative impact of their decisions.
Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and, and of course, the, the great work that your staff does. I, I guess just have a couple of questions. Um, is the ask potentially for money down the road if the state cannot accommodate this? Or is, is, or is the, or are we looking for an advocacy in working with, uh, other municipalities? And then, uh, so in terms of where we take this, because it sounds like very valued work, uh, for us, and, and clearly, once someone gets in the system, it's a permanent cost, it's a permanent loss of an individual and a permanent reoccurring cost to, to, to society. But I was also wondering, um, how does this affect the time of your police? Because one of the challenges, we know that all the police forces have, and you've talked to us in your briefing, that you're, you're down ten positions. Is this something that also allows, if it operates, allows your police to focus on other issues that they may otherwise not be if they had to take on these smaller cases as well?
That's a great question. I'll take them in order. So with the budget process that you just approved, you've already, um, set forth a path where we can sustain operations. So we've added municipal general fund dollars to the Community Justice Center in FY twenty six. Uh, we are a bit of a wait and see. So, so soon we'll see what the administration's budget is, but we won't know until May what the actual budget is for the state and how the Attorney General's office fares in terms of appropriations, we're hopeful, but, uh, that's not certain, and it won't be certain year to year. And, and quite frankly, even when the Department of Corrections was fiduciary for this, every year was kind of a question mark on whether or not it was gonna be the full amount, meaning about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was our grant, or something less than. So, uh, I hope that addresses the first part of your question, man.
So just another, the other half of that ask is, one, because we, as your staff experts, had sent this advocacy letter to the Attorney General's office and our state reps, we wanted to be sure you had the opportunity to see it and weigh in. Um, but also, so the other half of that ask is, are we going down a path that you can continue to support? And would you support, and this is a very general question, we would come back to you with details in the future, would you continue to support the chief and I playing a leadership role in being a centralized state in, in Chittenden County? And that's, again, very high-level ask at this point.
And then the last part, in terms of efficiency, I, I can't say that it makes us any more efficient today, but it certainly makes, um, us more effective in terms of a community in really resolving issues, uh, at an appropriate level. You know, over time, if we can actually chip away at some of this recidivism rate in terms of what we actually see for criminality, really prevailing crime trends being retail theft, other misdemeanor-level, uh, crimes that occur within, within the city, you know, there's always a hope, um, always an optimist that perhaps we can begin to chip away at the recidivism rate. Uh, but I think really the important investment is a philosophical one, where, um, we as a community can actually address a lot of this behavior, behavior, come to understand, and that, then moving forward, make better decisions.
I had a question, Chief Burke, about the, um, the information that is in the letter cites that community justice centers have successfully closed, uh, a little over twelve hundred cases, and that was seventy-nine percent of those that are referred and screened in for services. That was since the fall of two thousand nineteen, so is that saying of the four communities that Jesse mentioned, that over the course of four or five years, that was the case volume that got referred to community justice?
Yes.
Just in the three manager-led communities, not, including Burlington's numbers?
Not, okay. Um, yeah, and I, I feel like, you know, uh, I, I guess the second question is, also there was, you had said there were elements that were offered in other communities that are not, um, as present in South Burlington. I think you mentioned the COSA as one of those. Um, are there additional needs that South Burlington has that should evolve over time? Or it, there just hasn't been the same need, it's been more on the restorative practices?
Yeah, I would say, um, less of a need here for those programs at this stage. And, uh, you know, just to highlight that number, twelve hundred cases, that's not in any way contributing to the backlog that really has a logjam in our system right now. And, you know, in terms of even the Department of Corrections work, when they were in charge of, of, uh, funding these programs, you know, they really did have quite a bit of skin in the game. If we can divert people from the traditional criminal justice system, keep them out of our facilities, keep them off the probation and parole headcounts. Um, so, uh, with that said, I just wanted to emphasize why we believe so strongly in this work, and I feel that we're gonna have better outcomes if we can sustain our program.
Thank you.
So if they successfully go through that C J C program, there, there's no record?
Yeah, so when, uh, when we mentioned pre-charge, that means it's completely diverted away from the criminal legal system, so there's no record of an arrest. And, uh, you know, folks that believe that this is a bit of a slap on the wrist, they haven't seen the contracts that folks have to complete in order to, you know, satisfy their obligation to mend their harm.
Yeah, it really makes sense. I mean, if, if you, if you have the opportunity, right, pre-charge to bring some people together and try and get to the root, or at least make, you know, the person understand what they did, and maybe give them a chance to, you know, redeem themselves through whatever that process is, right, and keep them out of the penal system, right, and, and, and not have them have a record. I mean, that's, that's, there's a lot of value in that for the community, the corrections department, right, and, um, the individuals as well, right? So I, it's really worthwhile in my mind.
Can I add just a quick sense about that? And chief speaks very about this, and I do, it's, one of the things I've learned in getting to know the service delivery, it's, it is about the perpetrator, but it's also about repairing the harm with the victim. So it is both sides of the equation and strengthening that kind of community connectivity in our neighborhoods.
It seems pretty self-evident this is really important, and just so, and the letter was terrifically constructed. Do we have a plan to meet with the committees or the, the key centers, reps that are responsible for, you know, funding and possibly restoring the centers?
So we brought it up with our delegation at our delegation meeting. I believe the other managers are doing the same as they meet throughout the month of January, so getting to our specific representatives. Um, I got very good feedback from the Attorney General's office about this letter with a request to meet, so I think that we are, um, I think we are being heard. Um, and then I don't know if you want to talk about your conversations with Representative Laland?
So, yeah, this is under the purview of House Judiciary, and actually during the session last year, our model here in South Burlington was held up as the model, and, uh, I know that Representative Laland is, you know, reinforcing that point with the Attorney General's office as they're kind of examining how they're gonna contend with Chittenden County and these four different centers.
So, so his committee would be the committee that recommends changes if, if the, um, House and Senate are gonna act? It will come from this committee?
So it was their bill, and, uh, when they take it back up this session, that'll be the focus, and then I'll proceed through the process.
So Corrections has a budget line item for this, or had it last year, right?
Yes.
So they should remove that and give that to the A G's office?
Good luck.
To do the same work all over again, right? If they were gonna be logical about it, but that's probably not what they're gonna do, right?
I can't speak for what the policymakers might do.
Do I understand correctly that the goal is to, as the number of centers in Chittenden County get reduced, to keep the center in South Burlington?
So we have not, as a team of managers, chiefs and directors, we haven't gotten down to that level of discussion yet. Um, what we can say is, what I can say is, some of the other managers, um, have some concerns about being the administrative head of this, because it will be a different burden to employ staff that are embedded in other police departments. Um, the chief and I want, before we kind of started down that path of saying, we could have capacity to do this, we did want to come and check with you all to make sure that we are on the right path. To us, it aligns to your city plan goal of being kind of a regional leader and ensuring that, you know, similarly to our community outreach partnership, um, that we continue to provide lower level than a badge and a gun services to our neighbors.
So I hear in that, that ideally, if we can do it, it would be for South Burlington to be the home for the Community Justice Center for the four, for the three communities.
So we are open to exercising leadership in that?
I like that idea.
But we want to check in with you all before we go too far forward.
Do we have the capacity to do that?
Chief?
You know, I, I, I hope, and I feel that this work is important enough to, where if, uh, this project needs a lead, I feel that we could take it on and effectively manage it.
I would be totally in favor of that and hope that we can find the resources to do it.
I, I share Laurie's view. Do, do we have to take a vote or resolution? I mean, how do you, what is the public, you know, is just us five here saying yes? Or, or do you need something that you can take with you publicly to, in your discussions as you go forward, beyond what you've already written?
Yeah. So I think what we needed was just a kind of tacit agreement that we are going in the right direction and that you are giving us a flexibility to go explore. Any further partnership would come with agreements and grants and all of those things that would have to come back to you all for action at a future date and go through all the other elected official bodies as well. Um, so we're not necessarily asking for a, yes, we are now going to do it position, we just want to make sure that we're not out too far ahead of your intentions in this work.
Yeah, and I felt, I felt the letter was well, um, worded in that really, in, in an effort to kind of continue the funding and, and operate, but I, I think you highlighted what you're committing to as a deliverable, a detailed plan for the transition of three sites to one administratively managed site. And I think that's, that's sort of the work part of acknowledging there may be some efficiencies available, but taking the best of what's been demonstrated and, and coming up with a collective recommendation of the communities.
I agree with that. Yeah. So you, our support looks like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not long enough. So now we're gonna go to item thirteen, which is receive the city pension asset update and net performance report from the city's pension fund manager, featuring Dan Capell, or, uh, from S E I Client Service. Good evening, Mr. Capell. Why don't you come sit down at the table and turn on your microphone. If you hit the button, it turns bright green.
Now, am I, I'm just reviewing it. Everyone has the performance pack in front of them, so I don't need to share the. Can we, can we share? Would you, would you first? I, I, I have it with me. I have a paper copy with me, and I can also share it on, share it on screen while you release my laptop and join the call and share it.
So, to me, this is very complicated information, so I would want to see it as he talks through it. Is that what you all?
Hmm.
Okay. So why don't you do that, and while you do, why don't you do that? And while you do that, Martha can give kind of an overview of what you.
Okay, while Dan is doing that, I just wanted to give an overview of the city's pension plan, uh, for the record, Martha Macher, finance director. As of today, uh, there are two pension plans that the city has. So any employee of the city of South Burlington is either in the V M U S state-sponsored pension plan or the city's sp- sponsored pension plan. The city's sponsored pension plan, which you will be hearing detail of, was closed to new hired employees, uh, a few years ago, based on the, the union contract for the ASB, which is City Hall Public Works and Library. It was closed to the new employees in two thousand thirteen. For the fire department, it was closed to the new employees in two thousand eighteen and closed to the new employees for the police department in two thousand nineteen. So anybody that was hired in those three unions before those years that I just says are the people that are in the city's sponsored, uh, pension plan that you will be hearing about, uh, in a few minutes. So that pension plan also has a committee, uh, that oversees the investment plan and to make sure that, uh, the funding status of the pension is afloat. And that committee is made up of one city councilor, three members of the, uh, union, one from each union, uh, city manager, Odyssean, deputy city manager, city treasurer. So five, uh, members oversees this pension plan. So S E I, which is an investment company, does invest the fund for this pension plans. It also administers the, the funds itself. So all the cash flows in, in and out, uh, are all administered through the S E I plans. And the city also receives an extra services through Newport Group, which will also is the next item on your agenda tonight. So that also reviews and makes sure that, uh, we have, uh, is, that the plan is adequately funded, and, uh, you will hear where we are today. So a few years ago, while the city overall, before, it was closed to the new employees through an evolution process, it was not pre-well-funded, so it, it was recommended that the city take out some loan. So a loan was taken out in two thousand eleven, uh, eight point one six million, and that would be, that will actually mature in, uh, two thousand thirty-one, FY thirty-one. And so it was taken out through Community Bank, Refinanced TD Bank. So currently, we are paying, uh, one point seven five interest on that, so it was a great deal when through the refinancing process. And, uh, you might have questions, but I think, uh, would you say, just keep them to the end whilst you hear from S E I, from Dan, uh, and also from Eric, whom you will be hearing in after that.
One quick question, Martha. Can you tell us, when will we have paid off that eight million dollar loan? Remind me of that.
Uh, it will all be paid off June thirtieth of two thousand thirty-one.
Twenty thirty-one? Okay, thanks. Remember that number, twenty thirty-one.
Now my mic's, my mic's on as well? No, yeah, no. Turn off it. Perfect. Um, well, thank you very much for having me here today. Um, again, I'm Daniel Capell, I'm with S E I. Um, we're the, uh, the investment manager or outsourced chief investment officer, which I'll, I'll get to what that means, but, um, uh, for, uh, investment manager interchangeable, um, for, for what we are responsible for, for the pension fund. Um, for those that aren't familiar, I know that there are some, uh, some, some newer individuals, I believe, from pri- prior to being here. Uh, S E I is based out of Oaks, Pennsylvania. We've been doing, running this type of model for institutional investors for, uh, coming up on thirty years, so we partner, um, with a variety of organizations, um, uh, across the spectrum, whether it be public pension plans, union Taft Hartley, corporate defined benefit plans, not-for-profit. So we have, um, a, a wealth of experience in, in bringing institutional, um, outsourced investment solution, um, for, for a variety of investors. Um, so with that, I will get to the, um, executive summary, and please do feel free to stop me at any point in time as we, as we go through the, today's presentation. Uh, so as of, uh, as of twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, the market value of assets stood at forty-seven point three million dollars. Um, that is a one-year return of ten point four three percent, so that is, that is the second consecutive year of double-digit returns for the pension fund. So, um, it has been a great turnaround since two thousand and twenty-two, when I was in front of, uh, the council. So that is, that is the second consecutive year of double-digit returns for the pension fund, so. Um, it has been a great turnaround since two thousand and twenty-two. When I was in front of the council and that was coming off one of the most challenging years for uh, for equities and fixed income as a whole, so it really. Has been great to see um a rebound in assets and, and some growth along the way. Giving a uh, a further breakdown um on uh, on the individual asset class returns. And I'm just gonna focus on the twenty twenty-four returns. I won't go into the fourth quarter returns. Uh, so in twenty twenty-four, the equity segment of the fund returned twenty-three point seven eight percent. Um, and I'm happy to say that all of the active strategies within the fund. Uh, did outperform their respective benchmarks, which is what you would hopefully expect from active, uh, active strategies. Um, and this was uh, um, and, and one standout has been the inclusion of uh the US Equity Factor Allocation Fund. Um, which was added um a few years ago, which is a balance between active and passive investment um and, and rules-based and investing. Um, looking to fixed income, uh the fund returned four point one four percent in twenty twenty-four. Uh, and I should highlight that with the, if you look on the left-hand side, core fixed income or the US aggregate bond index. Was just over around one percent for the twenty twenty-four calendar year. So you can really see the benefit of the diversification that exists within the fixed income for this fund, so. Not only is, is the fund just invested in core fixed income, uh there, we also uh are invested in. Limited duration fixed income, which we added in with concerns over rising interest rates. And there's also exposure to US high yield and emerging markets debt, so diversification has certainly paid off um in fixed income. And uh, looking to, to real estate, real estate has been one of the more challenging parts of the portfolio. Um, but uh, you know, you don't want everything working in conjunction together. If everything. Was linear, you would question the diversification benefits, uh but real estate has seen its challenges as we've seen interest rates come up over the past couple of years, so. Um, the, the, the uh, return for twenty twenty-four was negative five point four seven percent. But we are starting to see a flattening out of uh, of, of, of a near bottom in real estate, or at least a hope of a near bottom. Um, so overall, very positive uh investment returns um. Uh, towards the fund and ultimately towards the uh, the plan participants and, and working towards that a hundred percent funded status. And now that last line item there, the manager changes. Um, in our role as OCIO, we are responsible for the, the hiring and the termination. Of the uh, of underlying investment managers within each fund, so. Uh, in some investment models, it can be a very long time-consuming process of you identify a manager that's on a watch list. Um, and then you make the decision to terminate, then you need to go to RFP and it can take up, you know, anywhere from. Ninety days to a full year in order to go through that type of process, so. Um, investors that turn to us for our model were able to implement a very efficient change. Um, we have a team of over a hundred people where they live and breathe manager research and we have. Um, a stable of investment managers to replace should something go wrong. Um, and not necessarily go wrong, it could be things have gone incredibly right and we just don't see that manager strategy working. Um, working in, in, in our favor anymore. Um, so this is, that the, the bottom line item there is a sample of manager changes that did take place and that was across. Two strategies, so you can see Western Asset Management was terminated and Core Fixed Income. Uh, ninety-one uh asset management and New Burger Berman were terminated from emerging markets debt. While Investco and Artisan uh were hired. And another thing that I, that I wanted to share uh with council is, uh beyond the manager changes. Something else that takes place that we do on an ongoing basis is uh, once a year, uh, SEI and one of my colleagues. Uh, who I work very close in partnership with, who is an actuary that focuses on the asset side, you're gonna hear from Eric about the liability side. We will perform a study to ensure that the assets of the fund are invested in accordance with the liabilities. Um, particularly that seven and a quarter uh percent um expected return. But also looking at the um, the trajectory of the plan, you know, it's approach, you'll hear the funded status today, but. As the plan becomes better funded, you may want to make changes to the asset allocation to protect that funded status, so this is something. That uh, that SEI in conjunction um with the committee are working on an annual basis. Um, and ensuring that uh steps are taken um to, to, for the most proficient um plan management overall. I'll pause there. Are there any questions about the high-level uh executive summary? Okay, great. Um, just very quickly on some market observations overall, um I won't uh hit too many points here, but. Just what, what SEI's views are and what we're seeing, um, I think one important item is uh. Inflation risks and inflation has really been the uh, the story. Uh, coming out of, uh, out of COVID when we saw this resurgence of inflation and it's something that, you know, we had not seen and uh. And really domestic or, or global, the global economy in quite some time, so. Uh, getting that, from that eight percent to three percent was the easy part. Getting from that three percent to two percent is a difficult part when you're starting from a much, much lower base number. And, and we see a lot of that um carrying over into the fixed income markets right now. So we see a lot of volatility in interest rates, which is why we made that shift. Into shorter duration fixed income for the fund, which has been very beneficial so far as we have seen longer-term yields increase. Our view on the equity markets um is to remain, and again, that I will say this, this term many times, diversification. Um, it's impossible to know what is going to perform well at any given point in time. In hindsight, it's, it's much easier. Um, we're at a point now, particularly if you look at the, the US equity market, um it's hit historical levels of concentration. Uh, the top ten US stocks now make up twenty-five percent of the MSCI world, so that's. The entire stock market factoring in every listed security of the MSCI World Index. The top ten US equities make up twenty-five percent of that, so that is the levels of concentration that we are at and that's why we have. Taken steps, whether it be the US Equity Factor Allocation Fund, maintaining exposure to global equities. Um, and, and again, it may be difficult over certain time periods, but um diversification and protecting from. Risks such as concentration or something that, that we firmly believe in. Uh, those are really, I would say two of the, the key themes that, that we, we are, as we sit here, I'm not gonna. Try to make predictions on where the S and P five hundred is gonna finish this year. I'd most likely be wrong. Um, but what I can say for certain is that we don't know what is going to happen and that is why we take a diversified approach with how we uh. With how we approach our investments and, and really stick to having a sound process in developing a strategic asset allocation. And now getting into the fee summary, I know last year uh there was a question, uh Andrew, I believe it's from you on the fee structure of. Of the investments, um and I'd sent Martha a follow-up, so I made a note to myself, when I'm back here in one year, I'm gonna provide a breakdown. Of the free, the fees for city councils, I did not have it um included at the time, so. Um, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll get into the breakdown of the fees and the structure. Um, and, and really this represents the fee for the entire solution that, that SEI uh provides, so what you're seeing is. Uh, the, the fee on this is, is what you pay, there are no additional, this includes SEI's entire uh solution. So if we look there at the tiers, you see the SEI public market funds. So on the first twenty-five million dollars, it is sixty-one basis points or zero point six one percent. On the next twenty-five million, it's zero point five six. On the uh, anything over fifty million, uh sorry, anything beyond that is zero point four six or over fifty million. And um, you say, well, we're not over fifty million, well, that's, we actually incorporate. The school districts' assets when we look at the pricing, so we accumulate the, we uh. We aggregate them together and that is what, where you get that, that price that is then uh, uh, the fee that is then applied to the public markets. So that is where you get that weighted average fee of fifty-two basis points. Um, ninety-two percent of the public market portfolio, or ninety-two percent of the portfolio. Is invested in public markets and that's what gives you that weighted fee of, of fifty-two basis points.
What is the value of the schools fund?
It, it's around nine million dollars the last time, yeah, so you're looking at, so you're looking at fifty-six million as overall is what that was, is what that uh fee is based off of. And then looking to the um, the alternative investments or the core property fund, that is a separate line item that there's, that. That public market fee is not applied whatsoever, one point two five percent at eight percent of the portfolio, that gives you ten basis points. And now an important part of this that we include in our overall public market funds. Is the custody services and benefit payments and just the way that we package our solution and with, and with the pricing that is included in there. Um, now to give you some, some context. For equivalent custody service and administration of benefit payments, as Martha mentioned. We're responsible for all the cash movement and, and cutting all the checks to, to retirees. You're probably looking anywhere in the ballpark from twenty to thirty thousand dollars depending on the custody solution that you do get, so when I say that uh. Custody services and benefit, uh benefit payments are included, there is still some real value that is assigned to that. Um, that you don't see broken out, but that's just part of our inclusive, um, our inclusive fee. So that brings the, the total overall fee to sixty-two basis points and you're looking at around uh, based on the assets as of. January first of this year, that's around two hundred and ninety thousand dollars on an annual basis. And uh, what does that fee include? Um, I won't go through every single item on this list, but um, a couple of the, the important. Uh, it, it's the, the strategic advice, I mean, again, having my, my colleague that's um on the advice team. Coming in and doing those asset allocation studies, ensuring that the plan is on the right path. All of our manager research and the, and the resource that we have dedicated to ensuring that we have the best investment managers. And not only the best investment managers, but the best investment managers at a favorable cost for the city. We uh, we, we take all of our assets, which is over four hundred billion dollars. Um, and that's how we're able to get favorable pricing from managers and then deliver them to investors such as yourselves, and that would be for, for active. Um, uh, investment um asset classes. Um, and then on top of that, it's all the reporting, I mentioned the custody, the benefit payments. Um, access to professionals as you see fit, um investment strategists, trustee education, another important one that we went through. Uh, this year is the uh life cycle of a pension plan, so it's what happens as the pension plan becomes better funded. And the, and um, and what actions can you take uh as you hit those, those various steps along the way? Um, which is going to be very important in the years to come and making sure that, that the education is there. Um, and we've also done uh, uh, education on fixed income or other asset classes and, and really anything that uh. That the various committee members may, may see uh, may see fit, so. Um, you know, we are, we're a dedicated partner and we appreciate the partnership. Um, and this is uh, this is our solution and, and uh, and I wanted to make sure that there was full transparency. On the fees and I apologize, I didn't know how this last year, but I, I made sure to mark down that I will give you. And, and in, in in-depth response, and if you have any um, further questions, always happy to provide as much transparency as possible, not only. To the council, but to the, the committee as well.
So I have a question for you. Do you know whether or not your IT infrastructure has ever been attacked?
Uh, so that's a great question, actually. Um, that is one of the key risks of, of being, not only uh. Being in financial services overall, but especially as, as we serve as custodian, custodian, you are the, the safe keeper of the assets. And uh, and you're the one responsible, responsible for the, the cash transaction, so. Though I'm sure we see attacks come up all the time of, you know, whether it be through email um or. Or phishing scams or whatever you may have it, uh so I would say, yes, we do see stuff come up all the time, we're very proficient, we have. A very strict process in place, which is constantly refined to adapt to the times of um, uh callbacks for cash transactions. Ensuring that signatures align with the authorized signers, um, plus a whole wealth, actually from a, a cybersecurity standpoint. Um, we actually, we're, we're, our, our cybersecurity or uh, camera. I don't know the exact term, right? We have a, a platform called SEI Sphere, which provides cybersecurity and we're actually hired by. By uh, companies and banks to provide cybersecurity infrastructure for them. So it is, it's probably one of the most important parts of being custodian, so. Uh, in short, yes, we probably are getting attacked all the, probably getting attacked right now for, uh, but you know, that's just the nature of um. Of, of the, the innovation that you see and, and um, I mean, you, you catch his headlines every once in a while of. Financial scams, so, but just being prudent and making sure that you have processes in place to protect you and thankfully. Uh, nothing to, to record of, of any negative impact to, to the fund.
Thanks. Other questions for Dan tonight? It was a good year. Let's hope for another good year. Fingers crossed.
It was a very good year, yes, let's, let's hope we can continue. Um, and, and with that, I'm gonna jump quickly, I, there's a, there's a bunch of slides here, I know that uh. In the interest of, of a crowded agenda, I just wanted to uh, to go quickly to uh slide fourteen here. And this is to look at a, a summary of the plan uh, cash flows. Uh, so as of, on a one-year period, the beginning portfolio value was forty-three point nine million dollars. Net cash outflows of one point five million and a gain of four point eight million dollars. And it's really important to see that this, this plan is a net cash outflows and ca- cash outflows are a product of benefit payments. Um, so there is still a reliance on having investment returns in order to, investment returns plus employer contributions. In order to uh, to maintain the health of the plan, so the, the investments have been doing their, particularly over the past two years, but. Over the long term as well, the investments have, have certainly been contributing and doing some, some heavy lifting. Um, I did a, and, and it's included in here, I won't, I won't dive into it. Um, I've started to put together on, on uh Steve's request of looking at the longer-term cash flows and the investment returns. Make up more than, than half of the um, the contribution, I think, believe it's about fifteen million dollars of contribution. And twenty million dollars of investment returns. Um, and, and I want to say it's around twenty million dollars of benefit payment, so. More than fifty percent of the growth and, and uh, has been uh, from the reliance on the investment return, so still a very important part of this fund.
And, and your, your fees in that net cash flow.
Correct, correct, that would be all inclusive, yes, yes, that would, net cash, when I see a predominantly benefit payments, but there also is the, the fee component of that as well.
It's your benefit payment.
Here, well, here's, here's, here's the breakdown, you can see the since inception total, so I, I actually discredit, so it's twenty-five million dollars of investment activity. Um, not, not twenty, fifteen million dollars of uh, of um. Of contributions and net benefit payments of twenty million dollars, so. It has been, uh, you know, again, it's, it's, the investment returns have done uh more than uh, more than, well more, well. Above fifty percent of the uh, of the asset growth within the fund. And it's great, you know, and twenty million dollars uh of benefit payments over that time period as well. And now looking, I just wanted to focus in on, on the um, on the performance report here. Uh, one thing that I, again, that I wanted to, to call out here is, as I mentioned, the US Equity Factor Allocation Fund. That was, we introduced, we thought we were in a, a better environment for not fully active management, this is rules-based active management, as you can see. Over the past year, um significant overperformance relative to the benchmark, so that was a positive contribution. Um, and the other thing I wanted to, to call out as well, and a shift that we made is on slide seventeen. We look at the limited duration fund returns of four point nine two percent relative to the core fixed income returns of one point six two percent. And that was due to a balanced approach that we took, um of concerns of longer-term interest rates rising, so when I say that. We're all, we're monitoring the fund on an annual basis, we're bringing forward our, our best thinking. We're not doing it, again, this, this change was made more than a year ago, we're not coming in doing it for a three-month change. Um, uh, three-month expectation and being tactical, if we see underlying um themes that are much more strategic in nature. Will make those changes, so that's uh, and that's just at the asset allocation level, and as I mentioned, there's all the managers underneath each line item as well. That concludes my remarks for today. Um, I could probably sit here for hours talking, but I know you don't have that amount of time, but. As always, if you do have any questions, you're welcome to reach out directly to myself, uh, reach out to me uh via, via Martha, you know, we're here to be. A partner of, of the city and we appreciate the ongoing trust and uh, thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Any other questions? So I, I certainly appreciate the partnership between the city and your company and I've always heard good things. And I think they, from years back, when I first started, um, the fact that you handle the, the payments. Has been a real benefit to the city, right? Because it's all in one company and, and I think that it's very easy to. To make changes and stuff and, and then inform you when somebody retires and so, and then the payments have to start, so I appreciate that, I'm sure that staff is too.
Very much so.
Very much so.
Our job is to make people's lives easy, that's what we uh, that's what we, we strive to do.
Great.
And deliver some investment returns along the way.
That too, that too. So thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thanks, Dan.
So we're gonna move on to um, item uh fourteen, which is uh, receive the city pension actuarial update and. FY twenty-three pension valuation with Eric Shape from Newport Group. Come on down. Now we find out how long will that forty-three million last? And how much do we have to keep putting in? And how many people are left? Good evening, Eric.
Hey.
Do you have a green light on your microphone there?
Yes, although.
We hear you.
Do I need to connect to that?
Give me one second. Get in there. Okay. Alright. So I'm gonna talk about the liability side of the city pension. And just to maybe take it back a second, a step, and just talk about what the plan is. And the plan is a plan that the city sponsors and it's a defined benefit plan. So it will pay employees when they retire a monthly pension amount. So they may be hired, work here for twenty, thirty years and then retire and get paid for the rest of their life from the plan. So when we look at that, we want to put a liability to those future payments so that you can. Accumulate the money to be able to pay them in the future and that you don't have to basically pay as you go and have these large expenses in the future. So the point of the investments and looking at the liability and the funded status is to properly fund towards those future benefit payments. That employees are currently earning in the plan or have earned in the past. And so we'll just kind of walk through how well-funded the plan is, changes throughout the years. And then how we get to the recommended contribution amount for the current fiscal year. And so I'll start that off by complicating it more in that when we, we put a liability to these future payments. We have two different ways that we generally look at it and present it here. One is what's called the unit credit method, which is what is, what have people earned right now in the plan based on their current salary, current service? Here's a liability today, what their benefits are worth. The other method is called entry age normal, which is a similar thing, but we're projecting out their compensation because they're gonna retire in twenty years. And their benefits based on their compensation. So. They could work for another twenty years and earn compensation increases and that will retroactively apply to all of their service. So we wanna anticipate that increase and kind of smooth that out over time. And it's worth noting that the entry age normal method came about because it's what's required by GASB for your financial reporting. So just to do that graphically, this top line is what an entry age normal liability would look like. The bottom is the unit credit. They end up in the same place. The top line just puts more in the current as liabilities and it increases slower. Whereas the unit credit would be lower now and increase faster in the future. So when we talk about the contribution, it's based on the blue line on the top. And when we talk about the funded status, we'll look at both, but the more important one is based on the entry age normal with the blue line on the top. And we'll go through all of that. But when I'm talking, when I talk about liability, I'm talking about things that have been earned in the past. So if an employee has been working for the city for twenty years, the liability is what's associated with those past twenty years. And what they've earned in the past. And then I will also talk about what's called the normal cost, which is what we expect to be earned in the next year. So what, what employees are actively earning in the coming year as a new liability going into the plan. So we'll look at the past and we'll compare that to assets and then we'll look at what's being added each year into the future. To fund that specific year and then fund towards the past years. So with that in mind, when we come up with a contribution each year, there's three main points to it. The first one is we compare that liability to the assets, that past liability to the current assets. And if there's a shortfall or a difference, we make up an amortization payment towards that, towards paying down that shortfall. And bringing up towards a hundred percent funded. The second component is a payment towards new benefits being earned so that you're continually funding those benefits. And so you're making a payment towards the past, funding new benefits, and then there's a small amount for interest. And we'll, we'll get the numbers and the graphic look at that in a second. But one thing to note is that in twenty nineteen was the final date in which all employee groups. Were no longer entering the plan. So there's various times before that, depending on different union groups. But as of twenty nineteen, no newly hired employees will enter the plan and earn benefits. Everyone that's in there already and working will still earn benefits, but there's just nobody new being added to the plan. And so when that happened, we took more of a look at the funding plan of the plan in general. Because there's now a more definitive end date. Whereas roughly in twenty thirty-nine, we would expect most employees to be retired and getting monthly payments. And when that happens, we want to be at a hundred percent funded so that you're not in a position. Of making additional payments and funding for employees that are no longer here and no longer earning benefits. But you're kind of just catching up. You wanna be at a hundred percent funded when everyone's retired. Roughly twenty thirty-nine is when that would be happening. And in keeping in mind that that's when they're retired, they could still have another forty years of payments after that. And that's why you want the money to just kind of be there and be available. Monetarily. For the current fiscal year, there's different. Periods of amortization that's been presented in the past. The one that's been made by the city and that we'll focus on is the fifteen years here. And that is a payment of the normal cost. And then a payment which pays down the unfunded over a fifteen-year period. And that's just under one point one million. And I'll note that the fifteen-year period compared to last year was a sixteen-year period. And that's because we're working towards that twenty thirty-nine date of shortening the period and getting up to, getting the funding percent up faster. But even though that the amortization period decreased by a year, the overall payment as a flat dollar amount is down a hundred thousand. And that's mainly because the, the asset returns. Over the last several years, really. As a percentage of payroll, it's slightly up. Twenty-three point three compared to twenty-three point oh-four. That is mostly because the active employee group is shrinking each year, so there's less payroll. And so it just, it's gonna start to look even more as a percent over time. Just kind of graphically, we're talking about those different components. The normal cost or the new benefits being earned each year is about four hundred and forty-one thousand. And that's the first part of the city's payment. The amortization payment towards the unfunded liability is five hundred and seventy thousand. And then there's a small amount of interest in there because this is all calculated as seven, one, twenty, twenty-four. The payment won't go in for a significant time after that, just, and so the interest is added for that difference in time period. The employees also make employee contributions into the plan and that was about two hundred and fifty thousand. Out of the current year contribution. So when we're talking about that, that funded or amortization payment on the unfunded, that is. Based on the funded status of the plan. So to add a another layer to these terms, we have the two liability measures. We also have two different asset numbers that we look at. One is the actual market value of assets and the other is called the actuarial or the smooth value of assets. And what that does is it smoothes out the asset returns from year to year. So that when we calculate the contribution, you don't have a large spike from one year to the next. Because of fluctuating returns. So it kind of just smoothes out those year-to-year spikes in the contribution. There'll be a graph at the end, show you comparison, the two over time. You'll see the market value spikes up and down, smooth value is kind of just in the middle rising. Right now, they're very close together. But if we looked at the different me- measures, if we looked at the smooth value of assets. With the unit credit or the current liability number, this is top row here, plan was about ninety-nine point eight percent funded. If we looked at it on the entry age normal liability, which is that the higher liability number, it's about eighty-nine percent funded. Similarly, just looking at those two market value, just over a hundred percent on the unit credit and just over ninety percent on the entry age norm. And I'll note that both of these are up about five percent from the previous year. Graphically for history, these are those two liability measures, the funded status over the last fourteen years. Uh, based on the market value of assets. Couple of years ago, there's a large jump, a large, you know, pullback back to the where it was. Basically, that was asset fluctuations in those two years. But overall, you can kind of see in the last three or four years, a slow trend up in funded status. I mean, the unit cred's currently at a hundred percent, but the entry age is working towards a hundred percent. Fourteen years ago, you could see where the bond went in. Prior to that, it was under sixty percent funded and then jumped up to a hundred percent funded. What does that look like comparatively? You're at about ninety percent. The last study I could find for public, the average public plan was seventy-seven percent. Beamer's was at seventy-five percent, uh, Veesters, the state teachers' plan was at sixty-one percent. Burlington's sixty-seven percent and St. Albans about fifty-one percent. Comparatively to most other public center plan, public sector plans, your plan is very well-funded. And it's moving in the right direction and doing what it needs to do to continue that funding. This will be the even more boring part. But in all those liability num-
That last slide was not very boring. Just for the record.
In those liability numbers for like every part of them, there, there are assumptions that go into it. Employees are active, how much do we expect them to earn in the future for their compensation? When do we expect them to retire? What do we expect the return on the assets to be? How often are people gonna leave before retirement? All of that goes into the liability numbers. Just gonna review what they are really quick. We do a review more in-depth every year when we generate the liability numbers and look to see if any changes need to happen. We'll also look at the experience from year to year and how what happened compares to what we expected to happen. And use that to help generate any potential changes. Right now, you are using the most up-to-date mortality assumption for public sector plans. And that's, uh. You're making monthly payments in the future. There's an expectation of how likely each person is to be alive to receive the next payment. And the table is published by the Society of Actuaries. They take all the data from social security, all these different plans, come up with a generalized table that we use.
Are mortality rates improving from a sense of, of longer living? Or since the pandemic, were, were they revised?
They were improving for a while and then they came back down and kind of leveled out. Since the pandemic, there has kind of been a pause in releasing updates that reflect the data from the pandemic. Because the long-term impacts haven't really been well enough understood. That they've paused releasing updated tables until they can better analyze the data to see how that's gonna be worked out. So COVID is not currently reflected in the mortality table. You, it was reflected in the sense that any positive experience in those years from things happening to retirees. Is reflected in liability. And then the most impactful assumption would be the long-term rate of return on assets. Just currently seven point two five percent. And that's long-term, what we expect. The current assets to earn each year and that's also used to discount those future payments to the present. And that's why it's so important because it has the biggest impact on liability. And then just to note again, those, none of those assumptions have changed in the last couple of years. We talked about the market versus smooth value of assets. On this chart, the smooth value is the tealish color that's pretty smooth. And then the market value jumps around, but they always come back towards each other. So what this will do is that if you have a very good asset return one year. You might not be reflecting the whole thing in your contribution, so you're putting in more than you may have. But on the flip side, if there's a bad asset year, you're putting in slightly less than you would have. So it kind of evens out over time, like lets you budget more effectively. You've gone over the more detailed plan experience. This is just the high level really to show you actual returns versus assumed returns. And to note that that's about eight years ago is when the return was lowered from seven and a half to seven and a quarter. So when we talk about those participants in the plan, this is a summary of what makes those up. The top section here, the light blue is active participants. Those are people in this plan who are working for the city currently earning new benefits. We can see that over the last fourteen years, that has decreased from almost a hundred and thirty to fifty-three participants. And that's because there, there's no new ones coming in. So those, that, that section will continue to shrink over time. When it shrinks, when someone leaves or retires, they move into one of these other two categories here. The middle section, the teal color, there's fifty-nine participants who earned a benefit. They are not receiving payments right now, but they will in the future, but they're no longer employed, so they're not earning anything. It's just sitting there waiting for them to get retirement age. Bottom section is retirees actively getting monthly payments from the plan. So we'll see, really everything will move down towards the retirees over time as people retire. But you can, there has been a significant shift pretty much since twenty seventeen. Of a decrease in the actives, increase in the retirees. Big picture, just some statistics on the participants. The average non-public safety. The average non-public safety employee has been here that's in this plan for seventeen years. And they're roughly fifty seven and retirement age is sixty five. Or normal retirement age is sixty five. So that's why they're effect effective, expected future service is just under eight. So there, it's a mature group now getting towards retirement age. Pretty similar on the public safety side, their their normal retirement's age fifty and their average active age is about forty three.
Yes.
Question.
Yes. But I'll wait, do are there other questions first? Go ahead.
So just about the um. Historical, the long term rate of return assumption or discount rate, so historically the plans returned six point six two percent. Does it make sense to adjust then the estimate of the long term rate of return? To match their historical turn, is it seven and a quarter too aggressive given our history?
One thing I'll say is that when we look at the long term rate, we try to look at forward looking. Expectations instead of the past because. There could be changes in the asset allocations compared to what's happened in the past or changes in the outlook of different. Asset classes and what we'll do is. Generally working with S E I, when they come in once a year, we'll review their expectations of the long term rate of return. Make sure it agrees with the seven and a quarter. I would say the median rate right now for public plans is either seven or seven and a quarter. I wouldn't say it's in a comparatively high rate to other plans. But it is something that gets looked at each year.
And similar question for the discount rates, you we also seem to be a little more aggressive on that than. Or maybe we we seem to be a little aggressive on that compared to other plans using seven and a quarter rather than. Seven is, so how, why do we, why do we do that? Or or is the discount rate in this and the student rate return tied to each other?
They're they're tied to each other.
Okay. I mean, I see, I I wouldn't mind seeing both of those seven, I mean, that would, I I just feels to me. Given what others are doing for the discount rate and given what a historical terms would be, that's.
That would boost our contribution.
It would, it would be more, a slightly more conservative way of looking at our liabilities.
Yeah, that that's where the state teachers fund got in trouble of having a very inflated rate for a long time beyond what the market was doing. I had a question on uh, understanding unfunded liability. Does that refer to the historical obligation or does it take into account the full obligation?
It will only take into account the past obligation. So if there's an employee that is still earning future service, that is not included in. The current liability number.
So there there really are two numbers there. One is the. The fixed in time unfunded liability or what it's funded at, which. This looks very healthy compared to some I've seen um, versus what the future liability is or the total expected liability. Thanks.
The deferred vested population, so they're not employees anymore. But they're not retired and haven't, they haven't reached the age or they haven't started. Their their retirement, their funds from the from the pension. So does that mean that they represent a lower liability because they are haven't, they're not still working and have not. Are not accumulating greater salary increases?
It depends on the person sometimes, but in general, yes. They would. Depending on when they left, like if they left ten fifteen years before their retirement age. That's a benefit to the city in that you don't have those future compensation increases being applied.
And the other question was, um, I know some. Public corporations, when they have pension plans that are closed. And everybody in it is receiving payments, when they reach a certain criteria. That company can just divest themselves of the plan and just sell it to an insurance company and convert the whole thing to an annuity. Is is that, is that legal or possible for us if we were to reach some milestone?
I believe it's certainly legal and possible. When you get to that point, maybe another difference kind of to the private sector and that. When you go out to an insurance company and ask for a quote on those. Annuities, their rate that they're gonna use is going to be three, four percent. It's going to be significantly more expensive. Because they're taking on all that liability. But to um, Dan's point and to the um. Kind of life cycle of the plan, that is what we'll we'd be working towards. So as you get closer to a hundred percent. You'd be getting more conservative on your asset returns and your asset investments. So that you're getting towards a point where the those are similar and there will be a point where you will want. You you're not gonna wanna make retire repayments to twenty people and maintain the plan. You're gonna wanna purchase an annuity and offload the life.
So so we would be the ones to go out and 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 look for an annuity for those people?
There are services.
Sure, okay.
Annuity placement services with. You know, like a mutual of Omaha or something like that will is one of the participants in the sector.
I mean, I'm looking way out. I'm just thinking, go ahead, that's all. Thank you.
My question has to do more with our budget this year and maybe I don't know if this is for you or or for Martha. I mean, last year we brought down, the city brought down the budget. Uh, by about a million dollars by using one time monies. This year. There was just one percent of one time money, the rest of it was clever savings and raising of fees, but one of those. Clever savings was this uh, reduction or decrease in contribution from twenty point five percent. The salaries to seventeen point seven, which saved us a hundred and sixty three thousand. Does that, did that impact, I guess, two parts of the question, does that in any way impact any of these numbers or brought? Trends that you're talking about and secondly, is is that a sort of a one off or that? Is always an option that is open as we will be facing funding challenges in the future as well.
So is my understanding that an additional contribution was made last year during the fiscal year? Oh yeah, it was.
I think at the close of F Y twenty three, the council approved. An additional funding of a hundred thousand to put into the plan. We did not do that at the close of F Y twenty four.
So then after questions, the impact of that contribution.
Was it ARPA funds?
Uh, no, it was not. ARPA fund is not eligible.
Any additional funding will. It it's a timing question, I guess, is that funding now versus funding later, that would accelerate towards. Paying down the unfunded at a quicker rate. I don't have the exact number of what the difference might have been this year because of that hundred thousand. Any additional funding is always welcome to the plan.
Any other questions? Come on, I had an actuary joke that I was gonna read, but I don't think I, well, you've probably heard some of them, but. Yeah, cause while we were waiting for you to to join, I was like, let me, maybe it's an actuary joke. No other questions? Okay.
I guess one last question, I just. You know, when you said, uh, this was boring, I think Jesse chimed in at the right time when you said, you know, ninety percent were extremely well. Well, well positioned and and this is just the state of Vermont or I'm just, I'm just curious or. I mean, yeah, I'm glad the South Burlington is is uniquely financially responsible to its citizens and its employees, but I was just wondering. How big an accomplishment is that?
I would say it's not just comparative to Vermont, I'd say in general, it's one of. The more well-funded plans out there. And I think the process around. The last ten or fourteen years of actually making the contributions. That have been, you know, going into it and going through the processes. Very much above what actually happens other places.
So I think Martha, correct me if you have a different opinion here, but. To give credit where credit was due, Tom Hubbard was incredibly involved with the last fourteen years of work on this. And really found that refinancing option of the prior debt. Um, which I think made a huge impact on the long term. Really set us up for success, so this is not this, these, this is a excellent plan that. Martha and Steve and I have inherited and and want to continue to shepherd and ensure it remains healthy, but past leaders really. Delivered it to us.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming, Eric. And thanks for the positive news. We'll see you any year. Don't move away. So um, we're gonna move on to this item, which is uh, fourteen point A where we need to vote on that uh. That payment. So do we have a motion for that?
Would just be to motion to approve the dispersments in the amount of uh, twenty five thousand dollars to the Larkin family partnership.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on this item? And then all those in favor say aye. It is unanimous. So that's our special fourteen A and now we come to fifteen, which is discuss and approve the annual process for the city managers review.
So this is your work. Can tell you what we have done in the past and there's a memo and some forms in your um, in your packet. Uh, so what I am proposing is what I have done in um, all my previous years of being a manager, it's using a form that. Is endorsed by the National League of Cities and endorsed by I C M A. Um, I recommend a process where you all complete um. An evaluation and the leadership team complete an evaluation and I complete a self-evaluation and then all that data is provided to. The five of you and me and then we meet and discuss it and talk about goals for the year and whatnot. Just as a reminder that an evaluation process is part of my contract and is very important to me to make sure that we stay aligned in our expectations and. Um, our work together. But ultimately, this is your process, you have the right to recommend changes to it. So I will leave it at that and let you discuss.
Thank you, Jesse. The process worked well last year.
I I do have a comment. So um, when I was a manager, I I felt it was really um. Important to get anonymized feedback from my reports and I know there's anonymized um. Written feedback, but written feedback is usually couched and circumspect because people are worried that if. What they write will identify who they are, so it's it's very hard to give written feedback. And you know, I I felt it was really helpful to get like truly anonymous feedback where, you know. Some of the questions that my directs were asked, you know, just imagine lead by example, treat everyone fairly with respect. Support career growth, build a positive work environment and you don't know who's saying it and they rate, you know, one through five and that. It it feels to me that would be, and I don't think that's part of this process, but it feels to me that could be a good addition to the process, something like that.
I mean, uh, uh, in addition to to written or or replace written with.
And people may well provide meaningful written comments, but in my experience, it's rare. Um, and people are feel much freer when they could, um, you know. To questions like this that are truly anonymous. You know, and that, and you can get some good, good feedback.
So when um, I assisted Helen, I think with the Kevin Doran evaluation, we did that, we sat down with each. Lead from staff and and acquired their feedback directly. That was, you know, two thousand eighteen or something.
So I'm not, I'm not suggesting an interview, I'm just suggesting like, you know, we're, I think we're gonna be checking some boxes just to have a. A similar set of questions for the leadership team. Where in an anonymous way, they they can check boxes, you know, one through five for a set of questions which, you know, relate to. The manager's performance.
So is that a change to?
It'd be in addition.
An addition?
Are, yeah, so you're suggesting it be in addition to the feed of feedback from the leadership team, but. Would it exclude any um? Commentary, cause that.
My my suggestion would be to leave everything exactly as recommended, but add to it. Um, for each member of the leadership team, um, to be asked to, you know, provide a rating, say one through five. For a set of questions, I I've I've got a few that I know, I I thought were. Meaningful when I was a manager, I'm sure we can all think of some and I'm happy to. Provide those, but I think that would be a useful addition to the process.
Can I just clarify, that would be strictly a quantitative though, it would, it would be like a survey monkey type thing where it's. Collated, it's a rating.
Exactly right, so for instance, you know, one question is that the manager support your career growth. One would be no. Five would be yes, you know, extremely so and you know, anything between and then there'd be a number, you know. Jesse got a three point two for whether she supports career growth, right?
So that's another evaluation addition form that you wanna add?
I think what tech like is uh, technically, I'm fine with this, I I'm totally open to it. What, because we are without an H R director, Nick Jingrow will be managing the kind of data collection process and has. Online form, so I I think what you might be suggesting is just to add. Five or ten or however many ranked questions at the beginning of that form and then have the open ended questions at the end. That he would aggregate all the data and give it to us. Anonymously.
Is that feasible?
It's feasible if somebody gives me questions.
Would it be appropriate to send around to all my colleagues ask questions or?
I think so.
And everyone can look at them and we we can do that through email?
It's what it's what is it about, right? It's about, you know, same gender evaluation, so that's that's.
This is more about open mail than my evaluation, I'm I'm more or less, I'm open to any questions. What I would recommend is you have a conversation tonight about the kinds, the. High level topics like you were just going through and have one person make those into a set of questions.
So let me just run, I have seven, let me, I'll just read these off.
Quick question, I just wanna understand. There's a form in here that we're gonna fill out.
For us.
That has those five question or that has the check in the boxes and um. We're sending it to Nick, so he will know where it's come from. He will be compiling that anonymously for us or? Okay, so what you're asking for is just to have that same form available to to staff.
For the leadership team, I have a different set of questions, so it'll be different. Different relationship. So these are the ones I wrote, um, does the manager lead by example? Does the manager treat all fairly and with respect? Does the manager support your career growth? Does the manager promote promote a positive work environment? Does the manager provide you regular feedback? Is the manager highly effective? You know, that that could be a million more, but those are just ones I came up with.
Can I just ask one question? It's not a bad idea, but uh, I I just in government, when there was a change to the, it would have to be. You had to be notified in advance of your rating period. So the question is, would we add this part now or do it be for her next year?
That's what we're here doing is trying to develop the timeline and the content of what.
Usually if there's a change to how you'll be rated or whatever forms you'd be judged. It, you were given it prior to the year that you would be judged. We're now adding it to basically right now for her past year's service. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so anyways, it's just just unusual perspective from. From what I've seen before. Just giving different examples to him and just saying, is she okay with it?
Yeah, is there anything in that introduction of a quantitative grid that would violate the contract?
No, so the the contract, our contract between us says said criteria may be amended by the employer. As the employer may from time to time determine necessary to meet the needs of the city after consultation with the employee. So I, so I think what you're suggesting is kind of a a great practice and a respectful practice of your employee. But I think you do have the right under the contract to amend it upon talking to me about it and I'm fine with it.
Good point, Mike.
I just wanna comment that the process, which I've always heard referred to as a three sixty degree review. Um, is a great process and I'm happy with what you've brought forward for doing. I don't know. Guess this is what you've done in the past, but it's, I think it's a great process.
So are we comfortable with those seven questions?
Well, I I'd like an opportunity, uh, and I think we could do this if those could be sent out and just. If you wouldn't mind Andrew, if there was one or two additional or recommendation, but not make it interactive, just.
So how how was the best process for this though?
If if you're okay, just send them to me.
Yeah.
Send them to you and you pull it. Do it by close the business on Friday.
Okay.
And then I'll collate those and send them all to you. And if there's any you wanna strike, just send them back to me and I'll do it that way. Just to me.
I guess I I do in that I'm I'm fine for you to do that. I would like to see them.
Surprise.
So.
But I can be the collater of them and share them with you.
So once Steve finalizes, he will share them with me, just FYI to you all.
Well, would would.
Yeah.
Would it be okay if when you send it, you copy us when you send it to him? Send it to Steve, but no, we if we don't reply, but we just see what you sent, then we can see what.
Prefer to the boss. If can they send it to each other or is it, I can send it to them, but they can't send to each other?
It's it's discussion is the problem.
So I think because you've now read them into the record, what you've read into the record is now a public. Record. So you all can see that in writing because you could go back and watch the video of it. But to provide additional questions, I guess you're taking out your. Deciding to take action to provide additional questions and agreeing that whatever anybody provides is okay. And Steve is gonna collect those and share them with me and then put them into the form.
Agree to defer to Steve's discretion to collate a good set.
Yeah, yeah.
Did I hear there was an additional step that Steve would be sending the collated list? So that if somebody added a question that I didn't think was appropriate, I could give that feedback to Steve. Yeah.
And I know I asked the question, could um, I I was interested in seeing last year's assessment. Just as a baseline since it's been just a year.
And we're new to it.
Pardon me?
I said, and we are, some of us are new to it, so we don't know what like, yeah, so we don't know what last year's assessment was. Is it? Reasonable for us to see that or no?
Yeah, so that was a request I had.
Um, so Tim, I'm gonna look to you here. So I think. What last year's assessment is, is all of the data. There was no other document that was written up or provided. Do you remember seeing anything? No. So. I can share that, you know, I think it is probably a would be considered a public record. No, it definitely was not, not in a public agenda. You received it in a confidential, in a confidential communication. So if you want, so it is a different, I guess to Elizabeth, why I wanted to have this question is that it is a different. It's it's not a summer, like to Andrew's point of like themes and aggregation, there isn't that. There is just the. The raw data and then we had a conversation about it. I can share that, but that is a, that's a different level of insight into um. People's, to Andrew's point, people's individual feedback.
Yeah, I think two things. It's almost like going back in someone else's personnel file over something that's not germane and then two, I'd be worried. Bias your opinion on uh a feedback that you're about to give, because many of the questions are the same.
Could you even be comfortable having it shared?
Say again?
I was asking if Jesse would even be comfortable with sharing that old information. And whether it's germane to what we're doing.
I I don't like the idea, because if you were to city council during that evaluation period, right, you probably shouldn't be seeing that previous evaluation. That, I mean, that's just my. So.
Yeah.
I I understand it and I'm happy to live with whatever, you know, everybody else decides. I think my experience has been because. You, because my experience has always been if there was something that there was a building block. You know, some developmental area that some that an employee was focusing on. You you needed to have that frame of reference to evaluate that. So it. It it was almost more of a continuity of progression and improvement and development and kind of all of that. So. I I'm totally open to, you know, what the group feels, but I also felt like if there was data available. Um, that because even though we're different, Jesse's the same, so. That it to me, it made sense to have some history there. I I understand what everyone's saying there, but it also. I if I was in Jesse's shoes too and have been in the past, you could also say. I get different new feedback every year. You know, there's no continuity to it. There's no. I I'm demonstrating things I was asked to do last year and, you know, it that type of thing. So that's really where my. Requests came from.
I I think you're making a good point there. I mean, Chris says, I think back on all the reviews that we did was, you know, a lot of it was, okay. There was this feedback from last year that um you had to work on this or work on that and. Then the evaluation, you know, takes into account how well the employee did right along that metric and so that. It's a valid point.
My, I mean, I, it is a totally valid point. It makes sense. The flip side to it is, as a new counselor. My evaluation of Jesse is what I've known from her this year. Next year, if I'm still a counselor, which I think I will be. I will have had the history of what happened this last year to reflect on for next year. So. Andrew and Tim both have that because they have that continuity. I'm starting a new relationship and to. Know what happened before is sort of um. Almost not pertinent because. I know what I've experienced and it is my rating and then next year I will see how it changed if there was something that I. Hoped would change, so.
No other council has requested this information, just so you know that, since I was on it in two thousand sixteen. No, no other, you know, new counselor relative to that that evaluation process has asked for the older data, so.
Uh, two observation points. One, I hear what you're saying. I would also say. This year was very different from the previous year. So, you know, being the manager of a council that had hired me that had been in. You know, been um serving for many years together, blah, blah, is incredibly different than managing a community with a majority new counselor. So. There is also, yes, I'm consistent, but the bodies not, the five, six of us aren't consistent.
You had your hands full.
In the best of ways.
I mean, what's the real harm in sharing it? I mean, honestly, I mean, anyone, anyone who's can forward an email, there's no. Restriction, right? I mean, what's what's the harm in sharing that information?
So the second point I was gonna make is that it it it, I would hope that the five of you would commit to. Actually writing an evaluation this year and writing up a summary so we don't get into this position in the future. If you're willing to do that, I'm, I mean. In my experience, it was great evaluation. So I'm not necessarily hesitant to share it with you, um, but it is, I I do think that you. I would encourage you to hold, it was a different council, it was a different set of priorities, it was different. Staff, you know, we've had significant leadership team turnover in the last year. I'm happy to share it with you, but I'd also encourage you to like keep a very broad mind. Um, if you are going to review it before you complete your evaluation.
I'd also suggest.
I think you guys are gonna be much harsher than last year. Seriously.
I'd also suggest that if I get that information, I wanna fill out my evaluation before I read it. And then maybe go back and change it if there's something I need to, but so that I'm not being biased by.
Don't forget that the evaluation is based on the previous year.
Yeah.
Okay, so you you don't really have to go back two years, right? And I I would prefer that we not, you know. Open up this bag of worms and and delve into it if we don't have to. Hasn't been done before, hasn't been a requirement, right?
I don't need it.
You've had a year experience, so I think that. That was, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but.
I have it, so I don't care, but I do, I do see Elizabeth's point. Again, that is a. It is a key evaluation metric. Have you worked on the things? And there weren't any. I mean, I don't can't remember any, honestly. So this this honestly is a little bit of discussion in vacuum. But um, you know, have have you worked on on the things that were identified? Is is a key evaluation metric in 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 all of these, you know?
I think because it wasn't a real, I mean, there was data points, but there wasn't a, there weren't. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jesse, there it wasn't uh your traditional um written narrative. With responses about expectations for the future. So like there, there wasn't that that kind of um level of feedback that would be. Documented except for what you were able to pull out of those written narratives, collected summary narratives.
Exactly. And that's why I wanted to have this conversation because there wasn't that, the five of you are asking me to work on blah, blah, blah. There was this. Collection of thoughts on how I'm doing that I have tried to interpret to do, to meet expectations. But that but that's why it was a little different than I think what you had intended.
Well, can I, can I clarify some? So in the process that you've outlined, and I lost it off the screen again. Where does the responsibility lie to um? Consolidate that into a summarized document? So that you do get that, you you do.
No, not Steve. Sorry, Steve. So the the idea is by, and I can just screenshot this if it's easier to see, so um. All the results would be due back to Nick by the end of the month. Nick would then aggregate all of that, send it out to all of us. Uh, we would meet either February third or February eighteenth, depending probably on agenda management, quite frankly. Um, an executive session for us all to review that feedback and to come to agreement on what the shared goals were. And then either at the February eighteenth or March sixth council meeting, the council chair or vice chair would provide a summary report in public session. That so the work would be between either the chair or the vice chair um to put that together based on the conversation that happened in executive session.
Yeah, cuz that there's three quick points. One is. Seeing seeing what was done before also could inform how to do something better in terms of a summary. It sounds like you did not receive that. Last time or last year. The second point would be um that uh. That in my own experience work, you know, having done evaluations at the superintendent level is there was, it was uh. Usually the chair or a a subcommittee that kind of collated the information into a. Uh, more of a qualitative summary so that there was air specific areas to work on and that was covered in a public session. Um, uh, I'm forgetting my third point, um, but uh. Yeah, I I I like I said, I can do it either way. I think. I anticipated that the doc, whatever came out of last year's process. Would be repetitive in this year's process. Oh, I I know what the other third point was. I, one thing, I think it's covered in the in the process as you outlined it, but. My expectation would be that I'm gonna cite specific examples that are my experience working with you. And that's a way to keep it current to this year's um process.
I'd like to advocate for doing it on February third because I will not be physically here for the eighteenth. So just putting that out.
Are you practicing your Italian again?
No, my Spanish.
Spanish this time. It's a romance language. It's pretty similar. So what's the council's pleasure? I mean, um. Look back or don't look back?
Look, I think two of us have the data, so. If Elizabeth wants it, she should have it.
I guess you can share it if you want to.
No, no, I think if we're gonna share it, we share it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all have to work in the same place.
I don't care. I don't need it. I I.
Do you want it?
I don't think I need it.
Mike, do you want it?
If if it's all gonna use the same baseline, then I'll use the same baseline, but historically, I've never done reviews where I look back to previous. Usually you counsel with the person at the beginning. You agree on the terms of the time points and you go for.
I already have it. You had it. But you want it.
I have to say, if it wouldn't go out to everybody to have the same baseline, I. And and it hasn't been a practice. Uh, again, I just was surprised there needed to be a discussion about it, but um.
I guess I'm just surprised that there's in, I'm sorry, I'm just surprised that there isn't a one page summary. Because I I assumed that would be the document be shared. I understand disparate information, you know, different people. It's it's. Everyone interprets it diff- you know, differently based on perceived knowledge of that personality or not, so I I'm. It had to have been a single page, I would have think, okay, for me, it's not a practice I'm familiar with, but at least there's a standard stuff. I'm just concerned that if it's, I don't know how many people giving different comments. Everyone has a different, all of us have a different relationships with different people because of time, period, whatever. It it then we all are interpreting it differently.
So since this hasn't been done in the past and there isn't that summary. Maybe this is something for going forward and there's a summary that is put together in the future.
So I I am gonna flip this. Um, I feel like this conversation unto itself draws a perception that something could be wrong in the past that I'm hiding from you all. And I do not want that perception to be out there. So to that end, I think it's worth. As long as you all commit to doing an actual summary that includes some kind of shared. Perspective on what you would like me to be working on this year, I am fine to share it with you all and I'll. I can just forward out what we rece- what you guys received last year to all of you. That way, there's no perception in the public that anything is being hidden.
Perfect.
That's fine.
And but and going, and the goal is to achieve a summary this year?
My my.
I think that's a fair.
I do this, you do that.
Commit to that.
So that sounds good. Um, but we need to approve this um schedule, right?
Yep, and the process just as amended is fine, I think.
Including your.
We need a motion for that?
No, I I mean, you probably don't need it, but I think it's best.
I move to approve as amended.
Second.
Emotion second, Elizabeth, favor say aye. Thank you very much. Uh, item sixteen, other business.
I have one piece of other business, um, which Elizabeth reminded me of at the beginning. We did get a letter from a constituent about uh the salt on the paths and that. There are pet friendly salts out there that can make a big difference for our uh. For our pets, of which we have a ton. I don't know what the cost difference is. Uh, she was informed that something couldn't be done without direction of council and. I would like to find out if that is something we could implement, cuz I think we have a huge population in the city that would benefit from it.
It's about ten X.
Ten X?
It's in your inbox.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't see that one.
I I just.
But one question is, can we reduce that by um maybe um. Joining forces with Burlington and sourcing it in bulk? I mean, I know it's ten X cuz it it's sold in these little bags and. It's not sold in the way that a municipality would normal normally source salt, you know, by the ton. But if it's us and Burlington, maybe we have enough purchasing power, we can, we can source it in a way that's more economical.
I think what Tom was saying and through me to you all today is that there's, there isn't a bulk supplier in our region, but that he knows of. We can do research.
And as far as ten X, this is just for the sidewalks, not for the streets. Are we talking about going from? Three thousand to thirty thousand or, I mean, what's the, what's the dollar amount of difference? Do we know that?
So it's eighty eight dollars a ton versus five thousand dollars a ton.
Jesus. And how many tons do we use?
Is that right? Hold on. I just sent it to you right before this.
That was the number. I thought it was a typo.
No, he didn't, and it's it's also, um. We would, we would have to do some analysis of. Is it in every sidewalk plow, which goes on every shared use path and every sidewalk, is it citywide? Are there places where you do want salt to make sure that there's safety? You know, I think that's a much more in-depth analysis than just how much salt would we, do we use and then times it by.
So. If there's a strategic way to do it, I would love to have an idea of what the cost would be for us to do it and then. So that we can at least make an informed decision about what to do.
Well, there's no bulk supplier, we have the numbers.
But we don't know what the, we don't know what the net number is. Is it adding five thousand dollars to our budget or is it adding a hundred and fifty thousand to our budget?
We can do that research if you would like.
If it's not a huge thing, I think it would be useful information for us.
Yeah, Burlington only uses it in one place, in their park, right?
Just in City Center Park.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn? All of us in favor say aye?